Good evening. My name is Alton Toth and as District of Seashell Director for the Sunshine Coast Regional District Board. I will be chairing this public hearing tonight. I would like to introduce SCRD Director Andreas Tyz, who is in attendance as alternate chair to hear your comments. SCRD Planner, uh Senior Planner Yuli Sayao will introduce and state the intended purpose of the bylaw. And may answer technical questions you may have concerning the bylaw. All written submissions received by the closing of the public hearing. Will be entered into the formal record of the public hearing and available for public inspection. SCRD Recording Secretary Genevieve Dixon will be recording your comments this evening. We also have other directors and staff with us tonight, and those include Jonathan Jackson, Manager of Planning and Development. Planner Julie Clark, and of course, the support of Bryce from our I T department. We also have Board Chair Darnelda Seegers and Vice Chair Donna McMahon with us tonight as well. Uh I acknowledge that this public hearing is taking place on the territory of the Squamish and Seashell nations. And this public hearing is convened pursuant to section four six five of the Local Government Act. To allow the public to make representations to the board respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Sunshine Coast Regional District Zoning Amendment Bylaw number three ten point one nine two twenty twenty. The public hearing for the bylaw amendments was advertised in the December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And January seventh, twenty twenty two additions of the Coast Reporter newspaper. A copy of the ads is available for inspection in the public hearing information binder. In accordance with section four six five of the Local Government Act, public hearing may be conducted by means of electronic or other communication facilities. Due to the emerging public health situation, this public hearing is not being held in person. But solely being held via the Zoom platform by computer or electronic device or telephone. The live stream of this meeting will also be is also available to be reviewed on YouTube. The following measures are taken to ensure openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability in respect of the meeting. One, notice of the public hearing and instructions on how to attend the meeting electronically are advertised in the newspaper. On the SCRD website and on social media. Two, the electronic meeting allows the public to speak, hear, and watch the public hearing. Three, technical support is provided to ensure that all technical issues. Are resolved to enable meeting accessibility and related information. Four, written submissions by all other means continue to be accepted by the close of the public hearing. At this public hearing, any person. Present who believes his or her interest in properties affected by the proposed bylaws will be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard. Or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to matters contained in the bylaws. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, but will be permitted to speak again after those who have not previously spoken have had an opportunity to make representation. The identity of persons who make written or verbal submissions will form part of the public record. When speaking, please give your remarks by clearly stating your first and last name for the record. Participants are required to express their opinions in a respectful and courteous way to other participants and to the community at large. Please be mindful that this is a public meeting and all verbal and written submissions form part of the public record. The chair or alternate chair may ask questions after everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to make representation. However, the function of the elected officials at this public meeting. Public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the proposed bylaw or to have a dialogue with the public. If you wish to speak during the virtual public hearing, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to indicate that you wish to speak. If you've signed in uh from a PC or device using the Zoom app. You can click the raise hand button and a member of staff will reach out to you in the chat function to advise you that you've been added to the speakers list. If you've joined the public hearing via telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and you'll be added to the list. Staff can only identify you by your telephone number, so when it's your turn to speak. I will advise that the participant calling in from a particular phone number is up next. Please listen for your phone number. Be patient. There are, uh there may be several speakers, but you will get an opportunity to speak. When I call on you to speak by name or by telephone number, you'll be allowed to address the meeting. You'll need to unmute your microphone when prompted. In the Zoom app, the mute unmute function is selected from the lower screen. On a telephone, the microphone can be muted unmuted by pressing star six, but is not to be unmuted until direction is given to do so. When the staff moderator lowers your hand, the Zoom app often appears to disconnect. This is only momentary and you do not need to log out. Please begin by stating your full name for the record. If you do not, I will interrupt you and ask you to provide this information. After you have spoken, staff will lower your hand if you've not already done so. Once everyone has had an opportunity to address the hearing, and if you wish to speak again. Please select the raise hand button and the speakers list process will be repeated. After this public hearing has concluded, the board during an open. Uh following open meeting may without further notice or hearing adopt or defeat the bylaw. Or alter and then adopt the bylaw in accordance with provisions of the government, the Local Government Act. May I remind you that tonight is your opportunity for input on the bylaws and no further information can be received once the public hearing has concluded. Elected officials are not permitted to receive communication or correspondence. Such as email, phone calls, or written submissions after the close of the public hearing. Any further submissions will need to be directed to staff. I will now ask SCRD Senior Planner Yuli Sayao to introduce and state the purpose of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Um let me share my screen here. Okay, can? Everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay, so. So this application pertains to a property located at twenty two eighty four Pixton Road in Roberts Creek. The parcel is about four point eight six acres and is currently designated as a country residential. In the official community plan. And the parcel is currently zoned as country residential two C R two, uh which permits only one dwelling. Uh the applicant is proposing a size specific amendments of the C R two zone. To allow a auxiliary dwelling on the property. So preliminary republic consultation was conducted. Uh during the months of November, December twenty twenty, as well as agency referrals. The bylaw, the proposed bylaws receive first and second readings um in June twenty twenty one. And following that, a first public hearing was held on uh in on June twenty second twenty twenty one. Um the bylaws receive an an amended second reading in November twenty twenty one. In response to a proposed change to the bylaw. Which is um to change um the proposed second dwelling to a auxiliary dwelling. So after tonight's second public hearing. A public hearing report will be provided to the board for further consideration. And so far, we have received about fifty three written submissions. For this public hearing. Uh the proposed size specific zoning bylaws um. Permits an auxiliary dwelling subject to a set of conditions, uh which include a maximum building height of seven meters. A minimum setback from the east side parcel line of fifteen meters. A minimum setback from the front parcel line of fifteen meters. And a minimum setback from the rear parcel line of a hundred seventy meters. And also a minimum setback from the west parcel line of seventy meters. That breakfast is not permitted within the auxiliary dwelling. So this size specific zoning uh regulations pretty much nail down. The approximate locations of the auxiliary ring as indicated um on these conceptual site plan. So that concludes my introduction uh of the application and uh back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sayo. All right. I'm calling a first time for submissions in the order of the speakers list. I do note that we do have speakers on the speakers list. So first up, we have Jane Braun.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Great. Uh my name is Jane Braun. I live at two 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 Pixton Road. And I oppose the Morrissey application for a second dwelling. Um changing the wording on the application for to from secondary dwelling to auxiliary building doesn't change the outcome. Uh Mr. Morrissey still applying to put another rental property on his land. The fact that it will start at fifty five square meters is also irrelevant. It is still increasing density, setting a dangerous precedent and denying the rights of other property owners in the Upper Creek. And of course, with a bylaw three ten amendment, whatever is put there now can simply be increased in the future with a building permit application. I have a right to expect that the current zoning of C R two will be upheld unless until there's a major overhaul of this of the O C P and a necessary public consultation. I bought my property after researching the zoning in this area and I specifically bought here because of the C R two designation. One house per five acre lot. Piecemeal rezoning is unfair and it undermines the public's confidence in local government decision making. Um I purchased this property because I want to live in an area with less density. Uh I value the rural residential ambience and I paid considerable money for this. I have a right to expect that it's not changed just because one individual wants to make more money off his re- rental residential property by turning into a rental business. The S C R D has a responsibility to protect the rights of property owners and provide some certainty in that regard. The O C P supports density and a clustering of services in the village core. There's nothing special about this application. To warrant a significant departure from the O C P. If there's to be a change in the density of Upper Roberts Creek, this should be the subject of a full scale. O C P and bylaw three ten review with the required required public consultation. The people of Roberts Creek deserve the opportunity to have their voice heard regards to how the Upper Creek is developed in the future. Piecemeal rezoning leads to chaotic, poorly developed communities that turn. That in turn put great pressure on the environment, the infrastructure and services. The coast doesn't have the infrastructure or services to support increased density in the upper creek. We already have water shortages. Inconsistent garbage collection, inadequate bylaw enforcement, a significant threat of wildfire in this zone. And poor roads. More houses will only make these issues worse. There's nothing unique about this application, and if it's approved, then every other property owner in the upper creek can argue for increasing the density on their lot. There is a significant risk that this will result in rapid suburban sprawl in the upper creek. If the people of Roberts Creek want to increase density in the upper creek, putting double or triple the number of expensive homes here. Then that's a matter for a broad O C P and bylaw three ten review where the people have a collective opportunity to speak.
Ms. Braun, your time is up.
Property has been, this property has been ignoring the bylaws and operating illegal rentals for years. There's an illegal suite there now.
It's brought.
Rented out, penalties have been imposed. Thank you.
Your time is up. If you'd like to speak again, you're welcome to raise your hand and staff will add you to the list for a second time.
Thanks, Alton.
All right. Next up, we have Maureen Drake.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, my name is Maureen Drake and I live at one one six six Furburn Road, Roberts Creek. I object strongly to this amendment. First of all, I ask that the unique history of this area, D L sixteen twenty one. Should be taken into account when considering this application. It's quite a long history and I've included some of it in my written submission. In short, we were granted a zoning change, which allowed us to subdivide ten acres into two five acre parcels. Thereby helping to raise funds for the necessary road improvements. The zoning change came with some strict requirements. Mainly maintain twenty percent forest coverage on our five acres. And only build one house per five acres. There would be no increase in density in the area. This was very important in getting agreement to have the zoning change. The property owner at twenty two eighty four has already ignored these requirements. There are two separate dwellings plus a huge garage on his five acres. And they're certainly not twenty percent forest coverage. What was the point of us making these promises? Secondly, and more generally, the official community plan for the Robert's Creek is being ignored. This plan is in place for a reason, and until there is a new plan, it should be adhered to. It's beyond belief that several zoning amendment applications are under consideration in this area. Before such a new plan is in place, allowing piecemeal and haphazard development. In areas where homeowners thought they were being protected by zoning bylaws. It just makes a mockery of the O C P and the communities, the Roberts Creek community stated vision for the area. What is to say that the present boom in the area will not go bust in a few years? It has certainly happened before on the Sunshine Coast. Then you will have ruined these protected areas for the satisfaction of a few developers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Drake. Next up. We have Carolyn Tornio, Tornio? My apologies if I mispronounced that.
Hello, Caroline Parno. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Perfect. So shall I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh the Robert's Creek Official Community Plan has a vision and for specific reasons. Such as preserving the forests and the rural lands above the highway. While promoting densification near the village foreign services. The heat dome, the water shortage this summer, and the flooding this fall are all reason why. The O C P has a bold and preventive and intelligent vision for what is happening in our upperlands. Specifically to try prevent and protect us from this type of events. We should be spending evenings like this one talking about progressive ideas and action on how to build a safer, better, resilient, and advanced community. Define an improved vision for Robert's Creek for the future. Hold actually a postmortem about what happened this past summer and discuss how we can learn and do better next time. Improve our our infrastructures and guidelines as a community. But instead, we are talking, instead of talking about the upcoming and the prevention. Here we are stuck in the movement of reaction. I am speaking here tonight to express my opposition against this application. The O C P is against this application. This indivi- individualized rezoning is not in compliance with the community plan at large. But instead, wants to accommodate one single resident in discord with his own personal neighborhood. Meanwhile, every implication of setting a precedence of densification in the upperland is irreparable. Every little action we take in that direction, as small and harmless as it seems today. Can potentially jeopardize the protection of our upperland in the long run. I have heard multiple times from B S R D and our own elective that the O C P was old. Who declared that? Who declared one day the O C P was old? I didn't know there was an expiration date to our community plan. If you think it is old, then join the team. Let's update what needs to be updated. Let's talk about what needs to be talked about. Let's talk about housing, climate change. Let's talk about smart actions as well as the legacy of this unique place on the planet. I urge our leaders to act as responsible keepers and stewards of this land in line with our community values. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Next up, we have John Devlin.
Okay, thank you. I'm John Devlin. I live at seventeen seventeen Harmon Road in Roberts Creek. I am speaking in opposition to this zoning bylaw amendment. I have several concerns about the proposed amendment. These are all related to the issue of increasing population density of Roberts Creek. In areas recognized as having a rural ambiance. And in particular, the area of the upper creek above the highway. Some of these concerns are road increased road traffic, uh difficulties with emergency evacuation. The loss of rural ambiance and difficulties with storm water management, which we've seen evidence of over this year. But this evening, I'll direct my comments to my concern about the erosion of the official community plan. Which is implicated in all of the issues mentioned above and raised by others already this evening. I agree with the official community plan committee. That we must be concerned that this application, if approved. Would set a precedent for rezoning and subdivision applications for other properties in the area. The S C R D board would not be in a strong position to deny other residents permission for construction. Of auxiliary rental properties if they have approved this exemption. Approving such applications will increase population density in Roberts Creek over time. And thus exacerbate all the issues associated with increasing density as outlined above. There should be a concern for the cumulative impacts of such decisions. It is not consistent with a long term planning perspective. To make decisions on such applications in isolation. It is a slippery slope. Protecting the principles established in the Roberts Creek Official Community Plan. Should be considered in the context of the cumulative impacts of the increasing density on rural ambiance. The O P C, the O C P C has made it clear that an additional residence, large or small. Is not consistent with the principles of the O C P. It is a step in the potential erosion of the planet. Hence my opposition to the current rezoning proposal, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Next up, we have Russ Proudman.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Russ Proudman. I'm a property owner at Lot C Furburn Road, Roberts Creek. I too am completely against the bylaw amendment concerning this application for a number of reasons I'll go over quickly. Uh in with all these meetings, I find that the reports that have been presented to the to the various boards. Don't seem to accurately portray what I think is happening. Now, a good example is this is not affordable housing, yet that seems to keep cropping back in every time the report is presented. It is not. Affordable housing by the definition of S C R D with their own data. Uh when I made the planning department aware of this, they changed the words to its housing affordability to the owner. Now it's been changed to housing affordability for the property. It's got nothing to do with affordable housing. It's a joke. Next one is. This is not an area for good transportation, although it's been outlined as being great. It's approximately one kilometer up a gravel road from the highway to the bus to the bus stop from the house. Bus is at the bottom of the road and if people know at the bottom of Bing Road is an intermittent bus that might go by every two hours, it is not a good area for transportation. There's a runoff stream to the right of the property, which I've also made made them aware of. But uh appears to have a riparian rights issue by B C's code. It is a working waterway. It's got riparian rights. Where this houses or sorry, where this auxiliary dwelling has been said to be seated is not far enough away from that conduit or from that that ditch. Uh there's also an existing right of way that crosses the property, right across that property. I don't see it. I don't see it being talked about. What were the ramifications of that? As other people have uh looked into it and mentioned, there's a twenty percent holdback for uh. Supposed to be maintained by the applicant for uh for forestry. That's not being done. The planning department justifies the application being reasonable as the properties across the road are a different zoning. Which makes no sense at all. So the Walmart could be across the road from you. But you can put the parking lot for Walmart on your side of the road just because on the other side of the road, it happens to have a different zoning that we could have over here. Makes no sense. The reports also say that the front of the lot will have a will not have a negative impact on spatial separation, rural ambiance, view, privacy in the surrounding areas. That's just not correct. The application calls for a seven meter height building. That's twenty one feet.
Thirty seconds left.
Thank you. If you stand on Pixton Road and look up from where the proposed house would be, you're looking at a thirty three foot up, approximately thirty three feet up in the air. How that could possibly rural ambiance towering over the houses across the street. And impacting their privacy and blocking the existing views of neighbors I do not understand. As other have mentioned, there's an illegal suite. There are multiple complaints against that, yet we keep going on. This would be a fourth dwelling, not a second. Uh I'll leave it there and I'll just come around and address my other issues later on the next time.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Um, next up is Nigel Langley. And just a reminder, if you wish to be added to the speakers list for tonight, please raise your hand in Zoom. Or if you're on a telephone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, uh, and, and staff will add you to the speakers list. Uh, Nigel, go ahead.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everybody, and I wanted to just start to say thank you to all of you. The reason we are here is due process.
Uh, from you, for the record.
Nigel, Nigel Langley, owner of eleven oh one Furburn Road and a builder in the community.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to thank you. Uh, the fact that we're all here, the fact that we have submissions is due to due process. And due process gives us the ability to know that we're in a democratic environment within practices that you are setting forth within the coast. Uh, it's a noble thing that we do have that on the Sunshine Coast. Uh, it gives everybody a voice and as you guys are clearly aware with the second round of this, that the voice is quite strongly against it for multiple reasons. Biggest concern with me is the precedent set in this area, the zoning that was changed for from, for you, from you guys did bring it down to one home on five acres is now being something that is being contradicted. I look at Jonathan, who's uh, obviously quite aware of planning and development. And if we have people that come in that have the ability, like developers, to come in and push particular zoning through, you guys usually have particular reasons of things that they need to be able to suffice a development proposal within an area, whether it be streetlights. And the reason I bring that up is that is something that's contributing to the community, to the environment, and that's something that you request. The sheer fact that we're all here in contradiction to it, and like I said once again, I'm grateful that we have the process, shows that for most people, it does not contribute to them. It actually diminishes their experience. This is the biggest investment most people make in their lives, including us. And to have that diminished by one person that figures he can push because he wants a financial uh, op- uh, uh, financial opportunity to have multiple dwellings is uh, is, is a, is a Trump move in, in a lot of ways. And it, I don't, on that sheer principle of you guys just doing your job, I uh, I hope you can understand where we all come from, and I'm gonna leave it there.
All right. Uh, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Uh, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge that we have Director Lori Pratt from Area B, who has joined us, as well as S C R D C A O Dean McKinley. So thank you to the two of you for joining us tonight. Uh, next up, we have uh, somebody from a telephone, uh, ending in two one zero zero. So you will need to press star six, unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Valerie McQueen. I'm at two two one seven Pixton Road, and I strongly oppose this amendment. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. This statement by the applicant that there is a single family dwelling and an auxiliary building with a studio space existing on the property is inaccurate. The inaccuracy of the applicant's statement should be disqualifying for any additional dwellings. Currently, there are three dwellings on the property. The studio was rented and occupied. The applicant's mother lives in a suite in the main dwelling. As a result of this admission, you, our directors, are being asked to make a decision concerning this property without being fully informed. C R two zoning requires that the property have twenty percent forest coverage. The aerial photo on page seven of your S C R D documents clearly shows that the applicant is noncompliant with this requirement. This requirement is also registered on title. While the applicant pay, states that the second dwelling, uh, a second well has been drilled and is functioning and able to supply water to the proposed dwelling, the issue of water remains a concern. An additional draw of water will impact all of us here. When the wells were drilled above us, when the C R two subdivision was done, we lost water at our place. At considerable expense, we had to install a submersible water pump. The issue surrounding housing on the coast is not one to be fixed with a piecemeal zoning amendments. The issues on housing on the coast must be addressed as a whole coast initiative. There must be a comprehensive regional growth strategy. Issues of water and infrastructure must be addressed. I believe that it is important to focus on areas to densify where infrastructure are in place. A well-thought-out development policy must set the way the O C P must be adhered to. If this application were to be allowed, it would be precedent-setting. It's a potential to increase density in Upper Roberts Creek. Roberts Creek is a special place and residents should expect Roberts Creek to remain a unique place. There is no need to have a Roberts Creek become just another built-up area. This app- Application, if approved, will increase, negatively impact the privacy of our neighbors, put a strain on already stressed infrastructure and negatively impact views of our neighbors. This isn't just about one amendment application. This is about the vision of Roberts Creek residents. Roberts Creek has the opportunity to keep our wonderful Perky area as a special place that it is. Uh, there are no net benefits to the community by allowing this application to go forward. This application is not supported by the O C P nor by the A C P. I hope that the S C R D will support the O C P and A C P and the people of Roberts Creek. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Um, just to let people know, if you do have written submissions that you haven't sent to the S C R D yet, uh, written submissions may be sent to public hearings at S C R D dot C A before the close of this public hearing tonight, and they will form a part of the public record going forward. So next up, we have Christian Prakratic. I probably butchered that and I'm sorry.
No, that was good.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm on?
You're on. Name, name for the record, please.
Okay, good. My name's Christian Prakratic. I live at one one eight eight Furburn Road, up at the top there, and I'm here with my ten-year-old son Luca. So uh, it's nice to hear everybody's voice. I don't see you all and I, I, I love seeing you when I do, and it's nice to hear everyone here. I would like to propose an opposing view for a moment, if we can all be open to it, um, and voice my approval to look at this uh, amendment and, and whether it be in, in the way it's laid out or in a altered version. And um, I am, I approve it for the following reason. Um, I'm a father with, with a, a ten-year-old son. And I love the idea of a multi-generally, generational family living. And for me, it would be nice to one day have my children and even grandchildren close to me and we can all build a nice small place on the family property where we can all be together and work on the property to help it develop and grow and be beautiful. Um, today, if my son was hoping to purchase his own house, he'd have to spend about a million dollars to get something that's decent. And by the time he's twenty, when he could probably uh, use his own money, he could be looking at up to two million dollars to build a place. So for me, I like the idea of him being able to afford to build something small on our family acreage, and that would help him get a really good start in life. So that is um, a proposal or, or at least a vision I have and, and why I would vote to look favorably or at least be open to this amendment. Uh, the pros, obviously, uh, the children, grandchildren can build something on the property. Uh, it's nice for us to all be together as a family, a multi-generational unit. Um, the cons are the lack of privacy and the extra traffic. And if I look at for myself, I would think, yeah, that's a bit of a drag. But if I can get outside of myself and look into the future and down the line, I see that this could benefit my future generations, my kids, my grandchildren. And so um, that's why I would vote in favor of being open to the amendment.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Next up, we have Rolfe. Given you permission to, to speak, you just need to unmute yourself and then full name for the record.
Okay, it's Ralph Braun. I'm a neighbor at two, of uh, the applicant at two two eight four Pixton Road. And I'm very opposed to this application to build an auxiliary dwelling on the property for several reasons, but I'm still seeking some clarification on processes with the application. Um, I have a question. At the very beginning of the process, if the applicant had stated that there was a seventy square meter or seven hundred and fifty square foot dwelling on the property, that he was illegally renting and that the applicants were not paying for their fair share of the utilities, which include, you know, garbage and road maintenance, and the applicant's assessment of the property didn't really correctly reflect the usage of that property, so they paid the correct taxes. And the applicant's rental suite didn't have its own well or septic system and could be, you know, detrimentally influencing um, the land around them, would the planning department, would any planning department anywhere have supported their bylaw amendment? And then, should it come to light that the owners at two two eight four Pixton have misled the planning department and that there is a tenant residing in the seventy square meter cottage today, and that this has all been documented by a C R D bylaw officer and the owners have been issued penalties, would the planning department continue to support this application? Given the willful disregard by the applicant of S C R D bylaws, and even more importantly, the S C R D tax and utility assessments, why am I paying for his rental unit to pick up garbage, to maintain the roads? Um, and there's the potential of water and septic irregularities that may be causing damage to my property and to other adjacent properties. Um, your S C R D bylaw officer stated to me in email, no need to send further information. We have been dealing with the owners and penalties have been imposed. We are aware this tenant remains-
The subject of the bylaw amendment being discussed tonight, please.
Um, this is not about the bylaw amendment. This is about the process in which we are managing our applications. I'm uncertain why an applicant can willfully abuse the system and then still get support from the planning department for this application for an auxiliary dwelling. And the funny thing, as others have mentioned, is the applicant also has a secondary suite on the lower floors, main dwelling, complete with separate entrance. That could be used as a rental suite in the future. I purchased our home on two 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 Pixton Road after reviewing all the applicable, applicable bylaws and the O C P, O C P in this area. I was comfortable that I was purchasing a property that was zone C R two and had a stated density of one home per five acre lot. The area has a country feel and a density that I was hoping to find. I spent a lot of money on this. It just doesn't seem fair that I cannot rely on the zoning when I make a financial decision on my retirement home, and the applicant who abuses the system gets S C R D planning department support for additional dwelling. I'm dead set against increasing density in the area as it will substantially change my enjoyment of our property. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments tonight. Next up, we have Brenda Sople. If staff can reset the speakers list, that would be great.
Hi, Brenda Sople. Um, I'm a resident of Roberts Creek and I've been following zoning issues for probably twenty-plus years. Um, I've seen the slow erosion of the O C P in Roberts Creek. I too purchased here in Roberts Creek uh, for the rural community and I continually see the uh, planning departments and uh, uh, others who are aiding and abetting the abuse of the O C P, and I am strongly opposed to the increase in density. I also uh, don't know why we're discussing this at all, since the existing dwelling already exceeds any of these zoning bylaws that i- i- it's supposed to be governed under. So it, to me, it's a, it's, it's, it's terrible that we're wasting time on this. One of the speakers suggested we should be focusing on the important issues. And uh, those of, uh, are certainly water, uh, the road infrastructures and, and taking the vision of the Roberts Creek plan seriously, keeping it a rural community. Nobody buys their properties to have, have it um, uh, you know, eroded by others who are trying to get financial gain. And uh, I, I didn't move here for financial gain. Uh, the, the, the fact that you continually try to get these applications through on the basis of affordable housing is, is the most ridiculous argument you could make. I, I would like to ask you, what is the definition of affordable housing? I read through the O C P three times in the last week and I cannot find the definition of o- affordable housing. I'd be happy to discuss that with any one of you in detail. It's a lie. That is not affordable housing. The assessment on that home just came in at one point seven million. The construction costs are going up. That, I, I think the intention of that owner is going to be to subdivide that bottom portion of that property because it's set up for it. I, and I think it's very wrong that we are even discussing this application. I've submitted several points on this and uh, Mr. Tezay, uh, our area rep has um, uh, confirmed receipt of that. And I will cover off more points as I go along uh, in the next round. But um, the, the, the fact that um, the uh, current owner is blatantly not adhering to the zoning is not good neighbor policy. And uh, and the fact that the, the planning department has even considered making this application is wrong. Thanks. I'll come back on the next round.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I believe we are into our round, uh, our second time for further submissions. So I will uh, officially call a second time for further submissions.
Oh, Director Toth, can I intervene there quickly?
Yeah, you sure can.
It's Julie from the background here. We have Lanny next up, who uh, is a first-time speaker.
Thank you. My apologies. Uh, when the names jump up into the green, I don't notice that they've done that. So um, Lanny, you can go ahead, uh, full name and then go ahead and give us your remarks.
Am I, am I on? Perfect. Lanny Matkin, nineteen twenty Porter Road. Uh, you guys need to think about the gravity of this situation. If you approve this type of development, you could solve affordable housing, but if you don't approve this development, you could solve global warming. Sorry, everybody was on edge. Um, no, I oppose this amendment, but a lot of it's, a lot of it really does just come down to whether or not the O C P is revered or, or what have you. It's, it's not that I'm opposed to development in general. It's only that the it's only that the O C P is a bit of a truce between people that are pro-development and people that are under, that are for status quo. And you can hear the anxiety in everybody's voice, that, the people, those that oppose this type of zoning development. It's not, it's not that anybody is opposed to development. It's that we view this as the crack in the dam that then opens the floodgates to having a completely different Roberts Creek in a short time. And if you guys do approve this type of development u- under this auspice and not going through the O C P, then you guys w- will see a lot more of this type of propos- proposal. And so we want to make sure that there's proper checks and balances. And we do view that, that is the O C P because it tends, when people have a longer time to think about things, it, it tends not to be so emotional or whimsical. It tends to be more thought out and thorough. And that's how we'd like to see a community that develops, because there is a lot of gravity to this situation. You guys are making decisions that last hundreds of years. And that's all, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Now I will call for a second time for further submissions. And just a reminder, the written submissions uh, must be received to public hearings at S C R D dot C A before the close of this public hearing. And they will form a part of the public record. If you wish to be added to the speakers list, please raise your hand in Zoom. Or if you're on a telephone, you can raise your hand using star nine and staff will add you to the speakers list. So next up, we have Erin Morrissey. Hello.
Can you hear us?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Very good. Um, this is um, Erin Morrissey beside me and I'm Danielle Higgy. We're the owners of two two eight four Pixton Road. Um, I just wanted to put a few points out there. Um, we are asking for a six hundred square foot dwelling. It's not um, it's not very large. Um, I just wanted to put out Gibson's District and Seashell District. Districts have made moves towards smaller dwellings on existing properties also. I think this is great that Roberts Creek is looking, or in the S C R D are looking towards this. Um, I heard concerns with garbage heat- I heard concerns with garbage heat, uh garbage pickup here and um I don't think we were. Immune to that here in Roberts Creek. I think many people on the coast were. I believe um waste management had some. Uh problems with manning and getting people out to pick up our garbage, so I don't know if um. How much of an issue that is, hopefully going forward, they can get that fixed. Um, I also wanted to point out, there's five acre properties below us that already have existing. Um, two large houses on them. We're only asking for one six hundred square foot dwelling. Um, in regards to the O C P, I sat in some of those meetings over ten years ago. Um, we're in unprecedented times now. People with COVID and with the pandemic. Have decided to um leave the city, come to a, a quieter place. And um. And so we're faced with a huge growth in population. Uh daily, we see um posts out there, people looking for a place to live, putting themselves on Facebook, on Instagram. All those things, um, we just wanna put this forward and um give them a place to live. In regards to um. Unprecedented recent floods and droughts, those are kind of out of our hands. I understand global warming is coming. But um, that's, you know. That, that's outside, it's a big scope of things, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, as owners of this property, we can't control those changes. And um, I think too, um, I understand people in Roberts Creek. There's many that are set and entrenched in the fact that. We're supposed to, they wanna stay the same, they wanna not change anything here. But at the end of the day, um, I think we need to move forward and recognize that there is huge growth on the coast. And that we have to help these people that are coming here. And yes, we'd like to make it affordable housing for people. And that's everything I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Next up, we have Jane Braun for a second time.
Uh, hi, it's Jane Braun. I'm speaking actually this time on behalf of Leanne Smith. She's appointed me and you guys have. Documentation to this effect to speak on her behalf, so. Uh, I will speak for Leanne Smith. She is a property owner at two two four seven Pixton Road. And she says the following, I live across the street from the applicant. I'm opposed to the application for the following reasons. One, uh, the area above me to the north is zone CR two. This is an area where only one dwelling is permitted per lot. I do not want increased density in this area. It will negatively impact the country rural feel of the neighborhood in general. And will directly negatively impact the area around my property. I built my home here with the expectation and belief that agricultural, equestrian and rural interests were protected and valued. I have no interest in living in an area of suburban sprawl. That is why I chose to build in Roberts Creek. And number two, she says, the applicant has a cottage on his property above his garage which he rents out. This is not permitted and it's been going on for years. The applicant has been operating this illegally. He now wants to add a second dwelling. This is not an area to be operating multiple rental units. If the applicant wants to do this, he should move to a place where it's permitted. Thanks.
All right, uh, thank you very much for your comments. Next up, we have Russ Proudman speaking for a second time.
Hello, uh, let me go on from where I was, uh, but again, lots of interesting points. For every meeting we've had, which has gone on for something like two years, the vast majority of the SCR D residents who have, who have. Spoken to this either in person before COVID or on, on the web. Have consistently been against this, at a vast majority. That's number one. Number two, the O C P C, the Roberts Creek Official Pla- uh. Plan Committee has consistently been against this application. Not once have they agreed to it. The APC, the Advisory Planning Committee, has consistently been against this application. So that's the first thing. The next thing that had me worried, which I did want to address. Was if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had a door number one and a door number two option thrown at us at the last minute, where it could be. A fourteen hundred square foot building or it could be an auxiliary dwelling, take your choice. Then because of problems that happened, now on this most recent one. It's only an auxiliary dwelling unit, which sounds great, because you know, the applicant taking into consideration how we all felt. The problem is, when I looked that up right away, that it says um auxiliary dwelling unit under bylaw three ten. Uh, the height limit is four point five meters, yet we're now asking for seven meters, which coincidentally. Was the size of the original building when it was going to be a house, seven meters. Uh, the next thing is, the um. When it was a house being proposed. It said fourteen hundred square feet. It actually said the size of the building. As an auxiliary dwelling unit, which sounds small, there's no footprint. It doesn't say. So right away, I felt that there's something going on, so I asked, is there any kind of. Information about auxiliary dwelling units being considered to be changed? Yeah, we find out there are. So right now, there's a committee checking on. Are we gonna double the size at a hundred square meters, whatever it is? So, so once this application, if it was approved. Which does not state the size or the footprint of the building. It can change to whatever the zone, whatever the bylaw changes, if it says it could be three hundred square meters, it's now three hundred square meters. So it's a way worse position. It's unbelievable. So what worries me is we have a building that's being proposed at seven meters in height. Can be huge and could be, uh because it says, even if it's a hundred square meters. Yep, that still could be a floor area or a footprint of a hundred square meters, which is what, a thousand square feet, whatever that number is. A large number on a basement, on a main floor. And we have a seven uh meter high roof. So it sounds awfully coincidental how it, it sounds exactly like the original house that's being put forward. But being called an auxiliary dwelling unit. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Valerie McQueen for a second time.
Hello.
Hello, go ahead.
My name is Eric McQueen. I reside with my partner Valerie at two two one seven Pixton Road. Um, I would like to start off with discussing Pixton Road itself. Uh, it was first constructed in twenty eleven. And now in the, just the last eighteen months, two years, the M O T have upgraded it from an eight F rural road. To a status of a maintained road. Uh, no longer a user maintained rural road. Yet in this past snowfall, a neighbor with a large, with his large front end loader plowed a one lane opening for the majority of the length of Pixton Road. M O T I's contractor were nowhere to be seen. The entirety of Pixton Road was finally cleaned up by the following rains. M O T I maintaining the road, I believe the neighbors would beg to differ. It has been mentioned that the properties below. The existing or the proposed amendment. Say that uh the properties below have two large houses, et cetera, et cetera. Well, they are in a completely different zoning, which has been in place since this entire area was first developed. I don't believe Robert Creekers are not anti-development, they are pro-O C P. And the cohesive development that is contained within the O C P. And for those reasons, I oppose this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Next up, we have Nigel Langley speaking for a second time.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, it's actually Chris Langley. One one zero one Furman Road, Roberts Creek. Um, we don't seem to be fighting the applicant. Here, we're fighting the board. And we're fighting the planning department. And I'll make this really short and sweet. You aren't listening. Nobody there is listening. This is two years now. Of all the people that have spoken tonight, only one's been for it and we're still going through this. Your planning department keeps moving the goalposts, changing it from. Um, residence to an auxiliary building. It seems that there is an agenda, either. The board, planning department, or both. Nobody is listening to the residents. And I'm prepared to go public. Put a notice out there in the coastal reporter. That states the history of what we're going through here and the fact that you guys aren't listening. And you're not paying attention to the residents. But you keep listening to the planning department that says, no, we don't see a problem. We're just gonna change it to auxiliary building. We're just gonna move this goalpost and move that goalpost. And be honest with you guys, if you can't blind us with your brilliance, you're really trying to baffle us with your bullshit.
I've cut uh, I've cut you off, Mr. Langley. For being disrespectful. If you'd like to speak again to the bylaw amendments that are being proposed tonight. You're welcome to raise your hand again and we will come back to you. Rolf, uh, you are up for a second time. And I will ask you or I will uh ask you in advance to please stay on topic. To the amendment by law in front of us tonight.
I think I was on topic um in regards to the process. Regardless, I would just remind the board and the planners that. The residents of our community of Roberts Creek have helped to pay for the utility bills. That uh the neighbors have neglected to pay for their um rental suite. And um I feel really used by this and um. I'll move on to a different uh point, but um let's be clear that it isn't fair. That um others are paying for their ability to make money off a rental property that is illegal. And now they're looking for another one. But on another vein, um the S R D uh planning and uh. Rep- a staff report to the planning committee development in uh twenty twenty one in May. Stated that the pro- the proposal didn't appear to have a negative impact on infrastructure, transportation, environment, rural ambience. This conclusion is totally inaccurate. Additional density. Um, the square footage of the dwel- dwelling will have a damaging effect on my neighborhood. The second well on the Morrissey property will place additional stress on the water availability for all in the area. Neighbors, as you have already heard, have had to drill a deeper well. Um, this SCR D staff report also stated that the dwelling will not have a negative impact on the rural ambience. Well, as uh others have stated, a huge um. Twenty seven foot high roof line off the road of Pixton. Is just not what we had in mind when we moved in here. Um, it's, the report's been poorly researched, the additional traffic, the additional noise. The dust alone from the road and the light pollution at night, which is one of the main reasons we love it here, is all these stars. Will change, um not to say when the um renter, the renters bring their RV. Or their pool or their. Um, trampoline and change the entire ambience of the area. Secondly, the SCR D staff report notes that the proposed secondary dwelling isn't. Is not considered purpose-built affordable housing. Addition of a secondary dwelling is simply an attempt by Morrissey to increase the value of his land. At the expense of the homeowners in the area. As others have stated, if Morrissey wants to become a developer, he should purchase property in area zone for such. It's not that difficult. Several uh, uh, he could sell his property, as we know, it's worth quite a bit and move to an area where he can develop a rental community. Um, several of the CR two lots in the area also being built out at present and they alone will add density and stress upon the roads and the water supply. Both the APC and the O C P C have discussed in detail the pros amen- the proposed amendment and both have recommended that be denied. The SRD should not grant this amendment as the neighborhood and the general community are vehemently opposed to it. I am adamantly opposed to having this application proceed. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you very much for your follow-up comments. Next up, we have Brenda Sople uh for a second time.
Hi Brenda Sople, um and to continue on, on my previous discussion. Um, the, the infill uh for density was supposed to be in the village core, if you read the O C P. Uh, there's very many points on that. Uh, I, I got only through the first thirty five pages and there were probably. Thirty or more references uh to uh the rural nature of the community. And that the infill was to be in the village core. Um, this uh proposal directly contradicts the previous agreements that uh the applicant made uh when subdividing the property. I, I, I just find that it's rather interesting that they have no uh conscience about going back on that and how they are. Uh, not living up to their agreements with the neighbors previously. Uh, the, the covenants on the property, they, this has been referred to previously, but. What I find interesting is that uh the staff report, there, there is not sufficient due diligence. And in fact, it's, 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 it's totally wrong. It's, it's totally misleading. If, if the SCR D knows that there's other suites and there's other occupants and, and a uh in-law suite and a, a above the garage suite. They still continue to tell us that this will only be the second dwelling. Well, I don't know how you count dwellings, but there's certainly more than. Uh, two dwellings and there may be three and there may be four dwellings, so. So in that regard alone, this is totally off uh off topic. And, and should be thrown out just, just because of that. Get the report right, get the, get your due diligence right. Uh, the covenants on the property again deal with a conservation zone that has to be at least twenty percent, that would be approximately one acre of the property. I don't see any reports or due diligence related to that. Um, I, I, I don't know if anybody's ever looked at that. Um, somebody mentioned also the streamside protection area enhancement area. That hasn't been dealt with. I'm not sure why. Uh, there was also supposed to be a drainage plant supplied. Uh, I don't uh be happy to look at that, see if that was done. Uh, I, i- if, if there's no follow-up on this, then how can we rely on anybody to be looking after the interests of the people? And uh I don't see that happening. But it, it's, it's really quite sad and, and disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your follow-up comments. Uh, and my apologies, Miss Sople, for getting your name wrong uh twice.
That's okay, I answered all sorts of things.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, uh, excuse me, uh, I will call a third and final time for further submissions. Since I did see that we are up to the. Uh, third round, however, I see that Alice Hanson is at the top of our speaker's list. Uh, so we will go to them first.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Uh, we're, we're both opposed to this application. Uh, my name's Lex Hanson. I live in nineteen nineteen Porter Road in Roberts Creek. And first, I'd like to welcome Jonathan Jackson back to the planning department. I think that some of these haywire. Applications that waste so much of our time aren't gonna uh appear in the future if they're so far out of compliance. I'm entirely in favor of the uh official community plan I think it should be adhered to. So I agree with the previous speakers, um and my wife and I are both opposed to this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for keeping your comments brief and to the point. Uh, next up, we have Russ Proudman for a third time.
Hello. Uh, what I wanted to address now, just to finish off, is uh Brenda Sople had asked about affordable housing. So I wanted to answer that quickly. So the official SCR D Housing Needs Report. Says to be considered affordable, housing costs must be less than thirty percent of the total before-tax household income. Okay, so if we took the fourteen hundred square foot building that was originally being proposed. There is no way it's affordable housing for any of the identified types of people who live in Roberts Creek. That's couples without children, couples with children, lone parent families, non-sensus families, other census families. Medium income tenure two thousand sixteen. That is the SCR D's designation for the six types of households there are. There is absolutely no way that anyone could afford to live in that building if it's a fourteen hundred square foot building based on a spreadsheet. That I'm more than happy to show and have shown to groups and people already. The applicant would be losing over a thousand dollars a month in all cases. If we take the six hundred. If we take the six hundred square feet that the applicant had just said on the phone, they still will lose money. Now it goes down a lot, but they're, basically they're building the house or the six hundred square foot auxiliary dwelling unit. Out of the kindness of their heart, because they will lose money every month by the time it goes through. To be affordable housing. It cannot be done. So to keep calling it affordable housing is just not true. The main thing that worries me with this, in this situation, is that I'm gonna go back to it again, auxiliary dwelling unit. Why did we identify, why did you, excuse me, why did the S C R D planning department identify a building? That was fourteen hundred square feet actually identified the footprint and was seven meters in height. And at the last minute on this new application or this new report, it's now an auxiliary dwelling unit. That wants a variance for a seven meter high building, but does not define the footprint. So when bylaw three ten is changed and it could well be changed to allow larger auxiliary dwelling units. It naturally flows to this property. We can't do anything about it at that point. So that's why I just think the idea of switching it to an auxiliary dwelling unit. Just doesn't sound like something's going right. I do not know why they would do that at the last minute. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Next up, we have Mr. Langley. Uh, I will mind, remind. That at the beginning of the meeting, I did say that participants are required to express their opinions. In a respectful and courteous way to other participants and to the community at large. Uh, and if you violate that, I will cut you off without warning.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you very much. What I wanted to bring to light, Alton, was the fact that it doesn't seem the board's listening. And you've had several, several speakers that are negative against it, but we're still stuck in this process. We feel like uh, we're on a treadmill here. And that no matter what is brought up, what facts are brought to light. The truth that come out about his second dwelling and the people that live above his garage and all of that. Nobody seems to care. And it almost feels like the board is got their own agenda. And nobody's supporting us in this. Nobody is, seems to be apparently on the board, seems to be neutral. It seems that the planning department is very much pro this. And when points are brought up, the goalposts seem to change. And we're frustrated and I think it's time. The letters were written to the newspaper about this process. About the whole process of not following the O C P. Thank you.
It's, it's Nigel Langley here, just to wrap up. It's not that we're not pro development. We moved up here and put the biggest amount of income in our lives into. Something that we planned as a legacy home and a retirement place for myself and, and eventually, you know, more family moving on. That said, this is something where Aaron could very likely do what my kid did. And that's get a second dwelling. Get it his way and then decide to sell and move on. He's worth maybe one point seven. You add another dwelling to it. You increase the ability for him to create more money for himself. And then the precedent is set if he's gone and we all have to deal with precedent, not you guys. It's not next to your properties. So we're in a position, not a development, not just develop, not in development in our area when we. Agreed to having it as one dwelling on five acres.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Uh, can I uh, just make a comment, uh, please?
Go for it, Director Ties.
Thanks Chair. Um, uh. You, you know, this is exactly what we're doing right now, listening. And uh, this is a process that starts at one end and ends at the other end. And I know it's been taking longer than it should have, um, as uh. Um, uh, uh, and I thank everybody that's come here now for the second time. Um, because um, some mistakes were made and I really appreciate everybody's patience and everybody's perseverance on this. But this is what we're doing. We're listening. And uh, don't see uh, the fact that something goes to a public hearing as a bad thing. It's a good thing. Uh, that means that the public process is in- intact. That we uh, that the board wants to listen to the community and wants to get the input from the community. In order to help with their decision-making. And just because something goes to a public hearing. Doesn't mean that uh, uh, that we've ignored. Everything that's been said. Um, so far. So thank you for everybody and I'll give it back to the chair at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Ties. Uh, just before I go to my last speaker that's on my list, um. Written submissions may be sent to public hearings at S C R D dot C A before the close. Of this public hearing and will form a part of the public record. Um, submissions cannot be received after the close of the public hearing. So if you had some comments that you hadn't sent yet, or you've got some comments that you would like to send. Please do so before the close of this public hearing. Uh, next up on our speakers list, we have Brenda Sople for the third time.
Um, hi, thanks very much Brenda Sople again. Um, thanks, Mr. Proudman. Uh, I um. I, I will check that out. I did see the housing report, but uh, I also find that uh, there's different ways to um. Define things and I, I just find that the uh, it's much too open for what affordable housing is. Cause if, if everything of, is affordable housing, then nothing is affordable housing. And uh, the land costs are too great in Roberts Creek right now. And I think the uh, board should be identifying areas that they could make into multifamily or co-housing. Maybe we need some more co-housing. But I don't think uh, densifying existing dwellings, especially in the upper creek, because it's against the O C P. Should be part of the mandate right now. And this should have been stopped before it even got this far. It, it doesn't fit any of the, it doesn't tick any of the right boxes and I just don't know why we're talking about it. Um, it, it's, it's supposed to be, uh, you know, the uh, it's supposed to be. By the people, driven by the people, but it seems to be a top-down agenda. And I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Tize, but I don't see that. And uh, I wish, I wish I could see it. Um, I'm also still confused. Uh, what are we talking about? Are we talking about a six hundred square foot uh? Uh, little house or are we talking about, I'm looking at a May. Uh, and it's my confusion, but you know, it hasn't been extremely clear. Uh, and then in May twenty twenty-one, it was a fourteen hundred square foot uh, rancher. So if somebody could clarify that and, and maybe have that, you know, sort of transparent somewhere in the process, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Miss Sople. Uh, I'm just gonna chime in and then uh, staff may, may add to it as well. The amendment, the bylaw amendment that is in front of us tonight is looking at one auxiliary dwelling. Uh, subject to a number of setback provisions and bed and breakfast not permitted within the auxiliary dwelling. Uh, Mr. Sayo, did you wanna speak to the, the square footage component of this?
Yes, thank you Chair. Um, the square footage limit for an auxiliary dwelling is fifty-five square meters.
Thank you, which is approximately five hundred and seventy-five, six hundred square feet. Thank you. I do see another hand up. Um, Russ Proudman. I'm going to allow you to talk. This will be for the fourth time. Uh, ask you to keep your remarks uh, to the point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to answer back to Mr. Sayo. Yes, the application is for fifty-five square meter auxiliary dwelling. However, it doesn't give a footprint. So I have a question for the planner. Is an auxiliary dwelling unit? Expansion of size being considered right now for bylaw three ten?
Ordinarily, we are not here to debate or what have you. Um, I will ask Mr. Sayo if he wants to answer that question at this time. Otherwise. We'll have to address it offline.
Yes, thanks Chair. So yes, it, it, it's being considered. In the new bylaw seven twenty-two.
So if I, okay, then I won't debate that talk. I will say that an auxiliary dwelling unit. In most likelihood will expand. And since this application does not specify the footprint of the building. That building can expand with whatever size a new auxiliary dwelling unit bylaw three ten puts in. So it could become a fourteen hundred square foot building. In addition, an auxiliary dwelling unit has a limit under bylaw three ten. Of four point five meters in height. This application does not say specifically why it is asking for a seven meter building height. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. And next up, we have Brenda Sople for a fourth time.
Hi Brenda Sople. So I, I'm still confused. How many dwellings are on the property? And this is one extra dwelling or we're, this, what, extra dwelling will be a fourth dwelling? Can, can anybody answer that? What is there now? And this one will be in addition to that. And based on what I've heard tonight, there's a suite. There's an in-law suite, there's the main house, and this new house in the bottom corner would be the fourth one. I, I just help me with that one because I'm, I'm terribly confused. Because you're making it sound like it's one extra dwelling. Well, it's not. We're up to four now. And, and we should have that clarified because that is setting a, that's a whole new ballgame. And I, I'm not opposed to dwelling. I work or I'm not opposed to development. I work with developers. But, but trust me, you gotta follow the rules. I'm done.
Thank you, Miss Sople. Uh, the purposes of this bylaw amendment are to permit an auxiliary dwelling subject to the setbacks. Uh, as, as stated within the bylaw and as presented by the planner earlier. Uh, any. Non-conformity or compliance issues are not uh, pertinent to the public hearing process that we are at here tonight. So with that, I see nobody else on my speakers list. Um, I will ask that if you have comments that you have not yet sent in, to please send them in. Um, Miss Sople, I see your hand up. If you have new information, I will allow you to speak. But otherwise, I am going to call this to a close. So go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I did check with the planner um, in an air, in another area. And one of the things that I was told is that the S C R D should not be considering changing the existing zoning. To accommodate a non-conforming use. And as far as I'm concerned, it sounds like there's some non-conforming use going on here. So now you're going non-conforming and we're gonna add one more dwelling. And, and i- if it's been intentionally done, which it sounds like it has by the owner. He's intentionally put a number of suites and, and in-law suites on there. And now he's asking for one more. Violating a bylaw does not justify changing it. That's what I was told. Just wanna know what you guys think.
Okay. Thank you very much. The purpose is to hear your comments, not to debate with you. So thank you very much. Next up, we have uh, Valerie McQueen, I believe. I've got the phone number two one zero zero.
Hi, I just wanna, yeah, it's Valerie McQueen on Pixon Road. I just want to address. Um, what you mentioned a few minutes ago about the addressing of the auxiliary building. And my issue is. Yep.
Hello?
Hi, I just wanna say that we are addressing the issues of the auxiliary building um. For this zoning amendment application. And all of the things that we've brought up tonight directly speak to that specific zoning issue.
Okay. Thank you very much uh, for your comments. All right, um, seeing no further speakers, uh, no further representations, comments, or written submissions. I now declare the hearing closed. For sunshine, oh, my apologies, Mr. Sayo.
Oh, um, uh, Chair, so staff would like to ask for a five-minute recess before closing the public hearing. Uh, to allow uh, us to discuss um. Email submissions that have, we have received during the, during the hearing.
Okay, we will take a five-minute recess. It is eight twenty-one. We will resume at eight twenty-six. Thank you.
You, are we, are we muted through this to the public?
Oh.
Here with all of the attendees.
That's correct. You're still live.
Okay, good.